I'd like to recall the Rappi Central School District Board of End Meeting. Time is now 7:50 PM. Please stand for pledge allegiance and Dr. Mortimer, please lead.
Tonight's meeting is to apply on the United States of America and to the power of the holy saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with a belief in justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our first item will be a public hearing for the district safety plan. I'll now put up the floor for the purposes... Can you guys see in the back okay? I sort of figured that. Alright. I would now put up the floor for the purposes of a public hearing for the district's safety plan. The plan, as previously posted in the public now, has an opportunity to make remarks. Remember, this is a public comment, we will not have a discussion. However, your comments will be addressed at a later date. Keep in mind, at the Board of Education, we will not be taking action on this at tonight's meeting. So if anybody had to speak on the safety plan, please quickly declare. A mad rush going on. Okay, I guess we will... I guess we now close the public hearing. And I can go to your student report.
I arrange here.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. We have some exciting activities happening at the high school. Yesterday, a blood draw had taken place in the school's library. The event was organized by USO, which is the school's school government. The New York Blood Center was able to register 72 donors, 18 of which were ineligible. Fifty of the donors gave whole blood and 40 donated red cell units. This was a very successful effort by USO. Winter sports season has begun. The wrestling team just finished second in May. At the meet, Bryce H. got his 100th win for wrestling. The hockey team has begun the second 2-1 with two shutouts. Alyssa Sanchez got the Rockland County Player of the Year for field hockey and Miles Long won at the Section 1 Open, which took place at the Armory this past weekend. The robotics team also did very well in the meet over the weekend. On December 15, there will be a winter concert from 7:30 to 9:30 PM in this high school auditorium. Various clubs are also doing holiday-themed fundraisers such as the Friends of Rachel Club and the Charity of the Heart Club. History Armor Society will be attending the Rockland County History Conference in February. The Society will be doing a presentation on the history and background of the Battle of Stonepoint. USO has also decided this year to do a winter week, which will take place during the four-day week before the holiday break. The themed days are Monday, which is a week's sweater day; Tuesday is winter, which is summer in winter; Wednesday is winter sports Thursday Day; and Thursday will be happy holidays. Also, on Thursdays, select choir will be singing holiday songs in between classes. Along with them will be the Suffolk Mountie dressed up in holiday gear. During January 2017, Cultural Month will be taking place. Clubs will be hosting classrooms that will represent different cultures for students to learn more about. Starting last Friday, both the senior and junior Cambridge classes have teamed up together to do a mentorship program where senior Cambridge students will be guiding juniors in the research and presentations. The past two weeks, the Cambridge Global Research Class has also been doing presentations for the Ramco Central community. On behalf of Mr. Kaplan, Ms. Minnick, and the seniors of Cambridge class, I would like to extend the invite to all the board members and the rest of the Ramco Central community to come and engage in all the class presentations. There will be two presentations tomorrow from 11:10 to 12:05, and the final two presentations will occur on Thursday from 12:10 to 1:05. I hope to see some familiar faces there. Thank you and happy holidays.
I have a question. I believe a couple of board members have already attended, is that right? Dr. Howard and Dr. King?
Yes, it was awesome. It was terrific. A real pleasure.
Thank you.
And the topics that students selected are extremely mature, controversial, and you can't really have a yes or no answer to, so it gets your mind and your heart going. Very proud of you guys.
Thank you.
Are you presenting tomorrow at 11:10?
Yes, I am.
And weren't you inducted into National Honor Society last week as well?
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Okay, our next... You're now up to the minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the Ramco Central School District Board of End Meeting, date November 15, 2016, as so stated. Okay, Craig?
Second.
Second, Matt? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Standards, okay. Okay, now we're gonna move to the next four minutes. Board, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes of November 30, as so stated.
I know.
Okay, Ronnie, thank you.
Second.
Okay, Craig? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standards? Okay, I go with yes as well. Okay, thank you, super intense comments. Dr. Rad, do you have any comments at this time?
I would like to share my time with the Reach Grant folks. They're going to give out lots of awards for teachers.
Before we start with the grant recipients, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the Reach Foundation to say thank you. We meet with Lee and we talk about what we're gonna provide for the district and how our mission is innovative educational programming. And we came to her about two years ago and we said we wanted to change things up a little and we wanted to do this STEAM Expo and we wanted to focus on all the great stuff that goes on in our district. And she was supportive right out of the gate. And then we kinda took our tour and I met with every principal and I met... And we went to all the faculty meetings and we had 1,700 people show up last year to see what great things are going on in Ramco Central and what our kids are being exposed to on a daily basis. And this year, we received 29 grant applications, which is more than we've ever received. And I think that's a testament to all of you in the room today that you've taken the time to go above and beyond for our kids. And we just wanted to say thank you. I want to turn it over to Gloria, um, before I forget. March 4th, Saturday, March 4th, from 11:00 to 3:00, will be back at the high school this year. And we're hoping to break our attendance record. So I'm gonna let Gloria go through our list.
It's Steve again. What's the name?
Oh, yeah, it's Steve.
Hi. As Ronnie said, we received a record number of grant applications this year. And we received applications from teachers in each of the school, but then the Ramco Central School District, which was very exciting. And the following is a brief summary of the grants awarded this year. Terry Duke from Montebello Elementary and Spotsburg Elementary. The project is Culture Box for Puerto Rico. This grant is to purchase cultural materials that will enhance the fifth graders' unit of study of Puerto Rico by giving them a more tangible learning experience. Beth Fleming for Suffolk Middle School. Her grant is to purchase a classroom collection of six fidget rings that provide sensory motor stimulation to help students focus. To purchase balance boards to help students with attention and anxiety disorders. And fidget toys, which are self-regulation tool to help with focus, attention, and calming and active listening. Kim Wujahowski from Montebello Elementary School. Digital voice reporters for English language learners. 20 micro-speak digital voice reporters will be purchased to enhance kindergarteners and first graders who are English language learners. And it's going to improve their writing, literacy, growth in oral competency, and increase student engagement and independence. Jennifer Butler from Viola Elementary School. Google Expeditions. Google Expeditions provides virtual field trips for students to visit places all over the world. This grant funds 12 viewers that will allow third-grade students to visit museums and specific countries to learn more about the various cultures they studied in their second trimester social studies ELA unit. Barbara Brain from Arthur Connor Elementary. Math enrichment. To purchase the Greg Payne Math Class Camp produced in the homework club with the goals of improving critical math skills, creating an understanding of math problem-solving strategies, and moving students toward mastery of computational skills. The following teachers qualified for the same grant I am, so I'm going to discuss them together. Andrea Edwards from Cherry Lane Elementary School. Eleanor Sterny from Montebello Elementary. Michelle McPirrenan from Spotsburg Elementary. Lyndon Hammond from Viola Elementary. And Dawn Main from Arthur Connor Elementary. This grant awards stash and dot robots to be used in makerspace areas of each elementary school, where students can use the robots to learn creative problem-solving, computational thinking, and the basics of how to code. Students control the robots through coding and there are many cross-curricular connections, especially in literacy, math, science, and social studies. Eleanor Sterny from Montebello Elementary for Go Pi Go, reuse recycle Lego. The Go Pi Go robotics program allows students to reuse and recycle Lego mine store parts to build robots. Using the Go Pi Go, students can transform their scratch coding programs from the coding platform into the physical world. Aleni Calabudas from Spotsburg Elementary for classroom flexibility. To purchase furniture that will be used to design a more flexible classroom. The seating will be used for students who need to learn in different ways. Some students need to stand while working, while others need to be able to move around in their seats. The equipment will be used to provide opportunities for students to do this. Catherine Connolly and Nancy Struhar from Arthur Connor Elementary. The roller coaster project and science lab table. Fifth-grade students in both Ms. Connolly and Ms. Struhar's classrooms will explore roller coaster physics with a hands-on experience in energy transformation. Students and teams will engineer a roller coaster structure to investigate the law of conservation of energy. The roller coaster pits and the lab tables with stools that each classroom will receive will help accommodate the various lab experiments. Susan Wicks from Suffolk Middle School. Pendulum paintings. To purchase special art supplies necessary for the creation of a pendulum. Seventh-grade students will develop problem-solving skills, understand the physics of a pendulum, use engineering techniques to build a pendulum, and from that, they will create a work of Gary Blake from Suffolk Middle School. Digital drawing tablet exploration. This grant is to purchase 12 Wacom art pens and pouch tablets to enable students to move the digital drawing pen across the computer screen as easily as they would a pencil on paper. Students will be able to work more expressively and creatively on their projects. Denise Han and Molly Yunzen from Cherry Lane. Alternative seating, movement opportunities, and alternative workstation for elementary school students. This grant provides five-four wobble seats, which is an alternative to the traditional classroom chair. And provides students with a gentle rocking motion while seated that can increase students' attention. One desk cycle bike pedal exerciser, which provides students with movement rates without leaving their seat. One Alpha Better stand-up desk, which provides students the opportunity to work while standing up, allowing for movement opportunities and increased focus. Jennifer Pinko from Montebello Elementary. The Mindful Case. To supply items such as braided blankets, calming music CDs, noise-canceling headphones, blue light filters, meditative mazes, fidgets, visual timer, and sensory integration tools to be used in a small tent called the Mindful Case, where students can go to practice mindfulness. This is a space to calm down when frustrated, angry, or anxious. Sharon Digga from Montebello Elementary. Learning using multiple modalities. To provide various DVDs that promote literacy to give kindergarten students the opportunity to foster and develop a level of literature in connection with technological use. The material is about critical listening skills and expand reader comprehension utilizing various methods of response. In addition, there will be new sight word system that requires use of visual, verbal movement for increased word retention and mastery. Bianca Tanis from Montebello Elementary. Roller coaster engineering. Kindergarten and first-grade students will use magnetic components to design roller coasters against a magnetic freestanding background. Through trial and error, they must determine how to address various design challenges and desired outcomes. Bianca Tanis from Montebello Elementary. Carrying me cubes to help engage students in group learning activities. Carrying me cubes are soft individual seating options that will help students with behavioral challenges to attend and remain on path in small group learning activities such as social skill, mindfulness activities, and class discussions. Babe Crowe and Lisa Passadetti Suffolk Middle School. Teaching ecological awareness and eco-literacy using an aeroponic indoor tower garden. Sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students will grow crops with a tower garden using aeroponic technology. There will be various lessons designed around this garden, including but not limited to scientific method in which for survival, human impact, sustainable living. Ted Zobel from Viola Elementary. Hot Marimba. To purchase two alto xylophones for fourth and fifth graders who will present student-generated multi-layered music on these new xylophones. They will study rhythmical and melodic ideas and then design layered pieces of music. Students will have to work together with the goal of composing, arranging, and performing their own compositions. We applaud these teachers for their commitment to go above and beyond to provide innovative, quality educational programs to the students of Ramco Central School Districts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your reference. Okay, now time for public participation on action items. At this time, the chair will open up the meeting. Public participation on action items only that includes what's listed under items 2.01 through 2.21. As a reminder, public participation will be up to 30 minutes. With each member of the public wishing to address the board will have three minutes. To do so, please approach the podium stating your names, school affiliation, or village or residence. If you could also leave some contact information, either email or home address, so the board can follow up if necessary. Please address your comments up here to the board event. But although we do not engage in active conversation, we're listening and doing what you are saying, we'll take into consideration. Also pursuant to policy 1230, 1430, and 30240, please do not discuss concerns regarding individual district personnel or students. So now open up for a discussion of public participation on action items. My kind of meeting. Okay. We will now close of participation. And we would ask the board... I'd like to use a consent agenda. And I ask the board for consent agenda for items, action items 2.01 through 2.21. If any board member would like to add a poll, please let me know. Now, I think I do have, because I'll lead off with a half. I have 2.08, 2.09, 2.12.
I don't need that one anymore.
You got it. Which one was that, 2.?
2.14.
You got it. 2.14. And I noticed a question on 2.20, do we still need?
2, 0, 2. Or no, 2, 0. Uh, yeah.
Okay.
There's just a highlight.
No problem. No problem. I will entertain a motion to accept...
2.12, you pulled it for me though.
Oh, did you want... I'm sorry, you didn't want to pull. Yeah, no problem. So 2.12 will be pulled. I am opposed, I didn't see that. Oh, you know, okay. I would entertain a motion to accept items 2.0 through 2.21, with the exception of 2.08, 2.19, 2.12, 2.14, 2.20. All those acts of... Sorry, I need a motion.
I think 2.20 is okay.
Oh, you were okay, that was... You got your answer, okay. Got it. Okay. I need a motion for those action items. 2.01.
The consent agenda excluding 2.08, 2.09.
Correct. 2.12.
2.14. Second.
Okay, Matt, second. If all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stand. Okay, now, if you go to 2.08, take a motion and a second. Open it for discussion. Motion? Okay, so you got it? Second?
Second.
Craig? Okay. Discussion 2.0.
Yes, so can I just... I know that this was based on the recommendation of the auditor. If I could just have some sort of clarification, a couple of statements about these two different reserve funds and how they're other slightly different, and are these for just setting them up at this point and not actually putting money into them?
Good. We should be pumping out a...
This vote tonight, if approved, would just establish the reserve funds and would not fund them at all. That we typically do in August when you look at tax surfs and insurance reserves. This would just establish the reserve funds.
And these reserve funds are for employee retirement contribution, sorry. It's for employee retirement system retirement contribution.
That's 2.08 and 2.09 is for post-retirement contributions.
Okay. And so then there'll be analysis of how to fund those?
Yes.
This is just to be...
If to fund them at all, and if so, what would be appropriate.
Okay, so you can leave a reserve, a little bit without paying?
Could be zero, yes.
My question, Dr. Adams, the name is explanatory, but we haven't done this in the past, and I know it's the auditor's recommendation. Can you explain a little bit why they felt that was necessary?
The... Particularly with TRS, including ERS. ERS in the last five years has gone as high, in excess of 20% of what we have to contribute for each ERS employee. The vast majority of the employees in the district are TRS employees, the teacher retirement system. But there are a significant number in the employee retirement system, ERS. And what Mr. Wimmer, part of the suggestion or recommendation, was to help mitigate fluctuations when it goes real high, when it's low, if you can, fund some money in there. And he kind of had some parameters, but I think we would need to be more detailed with the parameters if we were recommending a funding amount, so that if it goes back up, then instead of program or personnel reductions, it can be handled through the reserve fund.
And we would... We would vote annually on how much would go in the fund, correct?
Yes, correct.
And so there would be another vote in this school year for next year's funding?
It typically occurs in August when we close out all of the funds. We have... It would be based upon the 1617 school year, but we had until August to finalize the reserve funds.
So it's not too late for 1617 to have those funds?
To put money into the fund? Correct.
We could still...
We can still fund that.
Where... What would the source be?
Well, it would be to the extent that if there were savings throughout the course of the year, or if, you know, we didn't have expenditures in a certain area...
So it could be a line?
Yes, could be. A budget transfer. But we're not funding them. This vote is simply to establish funds.
Okay, anybody else in the discussion? Okay, entertain a motion to accept 2.08.
Thank you. We've been voting on 8 and 9 forever.
Are you okay? Did you guys get on yourself?
We have a motion on 2.08.
Correct, that's what I... 2.08, we have a motion for that. Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I've got the female, because numbers go over places. All right, 2.09. Any discussion? I have a... Got it?
Second.
Second, got it? All in favor? Discussion?
Right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, 2.12. I would entertain a motion to open up discussion for 2.12.
Second.
Craig? Okay. Discussion on 2.12. Okay, sounds good. Okay, entertain a motion to accept 2.12. All is favor, message. There's no discussion, all 2.12. Good call, okay. 2.12, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Abstained, okay.
Abstention, myself as well. Thank you.
Okay. Got it. Okay, got it. Okay, now, 2.14.
Oh, 2.14, that's not correct.
Yeah. Not okay. I'm voting to open up first.
So my question's with regards to the budget transfer for the Affordable Care Act consultants. I'm assuming we've had this in the past, it's something that we need every year, and we've been practicing that with some of the assumptions. Most people in this district are insured with the Act.
There are a lot of requirements with the Affordable Care Act, and the compliance deadline is December 31st of this year. And where, in particular, what we have to analyze is our substances. Part-time employees, because if they work X amount of hours or X amount of days, make a certain amount of money, then we would have to offer health care or pay under the Affordable Care Act. Steve, is there anything else to add to that?
There's a form also that the company does, 1090, that the company will produce for us for all employees. So even though it's analyzing to make sure that we all have benefits that perhaps most of you and whatever others also, everyone gets a form showing, yes, you need to do them.
So is this something that happens every year, we would hire a consultant to do this, or is this something...
This is the first time that we've had to hire a consultant. But this will be something we could... But this will be something we could, as long as the Affordable Care Act is in place, we'll need to have.
And it's the first year because we have more substitutes, or because this was beforehand less?
This is, this is the first compliance deadline for school districts, this year.
Okay. Okay, so last year we didn't have compliance deadline?
Correct. And we were notified after the budget approval in May, so we didn't have money set aside in this, it's actually a board of education line for consultants. That's why we have to have a budget transfer covered. Next year, it will be fully funded under your board of education line.
Okay, and is this something that next year, a member of the administration will take care of, or are we going to have to hire a consultant every year as long as the Affordable Care Act is still in place?
We'll need it. We, my recommendation would be to continue with a consultant. It's very complicated, lots of forms, and you could perhaps hire somebody full-time to do that for us, but it would be less expensive to hire a consultant to do. And have that expertise.
More being done by, by Steve's department, a lot of work, a lot of hours going to that just to get them some of the information. So it's not like just borrowing it out of them, there's still a lot of work involved.
Okay. Anybody else? Of course.
My mic is not working very much. My question is, if responsibilities I know are new because of the requirements being with this fall, under something that an assistant superintendent for business could be doing for the district?
No, the, a lot of the responsibility actually falls out of HR in terms of tracking the substitute, substitute employees and really all of the employees, and have that information submitted to the consultant. And a consultant will also randomly verify the files and make sure that everything that we've submitted is accurate.
Your sources provides employee information?
Yes.
And then the consultant verifies the information is accurate? What else does either, or he, or she?
Teresa, who do you want?
Compliance issues, and we're giving them the broad data, and then they're going through and to make sure and comply with everyone else. So we have to make sure that if people are working a certain amount of hours, that they have to receive that, what, health care and a certain percentage, that they don't have, that we cannot have come here with people. There's a lot of work involved, and then all that has to be, but all the benefits, all this health benefits for every employee have to be put into to make sure that that's all correct, so they have how much we're paying for it, how much we're paying for. There's a lot, big analysis done with it, and then they provide these 1095, which, so I would think it's probably hundreds of hours of work. It doesn't, maybe it doesn't sound like it, but there's a lot of work. I'm sure these hundreds of hours work just in a talk.
If it's clarifying, my, I will tell you, and it's my understanding that every district and county is using a consultant, because there's no way you're doing any of this.
And the last question, you might be able to not make predictions, but if the act is altered by any chance, I guess our decisions can be changed on an annual basis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on 2.14? Okay, motion accept? All in favor?
Aye.
Any pauses, any obsessions? 2.14 passes. And I apologize, Marie's 2.20, are you okay, you said? Okay. Uh, we're now going to go to administrative reports. And our first report is from Ms. Kelly Dowd of the RP Connor Coaches. I wasn't, I was a college student, I said.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Dr. Adams over at Administration. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to share the comprehensive curriculum plan for RP Connor. I'd like to thank the board for the time I spent with Mrs. DiCristo over the summer. It was a wonderful opportunity to transition with the principal and learn all about the wonderful things that have happened at RP Connor during her time. And, I don't know. Okay, so we began the school year by discussing what success looks like at RP Connor. We believe that we are successful when we are able to inspire students by demonstrating our belief in them. We at RP Connor are taking a look at the learning trajectory, using assessment data to determine where individual students are, and work with each individual student to help them realize their potential. How do you achieve success? We believe that we will achieve success at Connor through shared beliefs. The belief that all children can be successful by providing professional development that is focused, by inspecting what we expect, establishing the expectation for what is important. We will use data to drive our instruct, to drive our instruction and inform our decision-making. We'll also provide feedback that is timely and relevant. What are we proud of at Connor? This year, what's missed at RP Connor is the Connor Leadership Team. This is the team that's comprised of the instructional facilitators, clinical staff, literacy and math specialists. These staff members view the instructional program from different lenses and work together to support the building goals. We are also very proud of the warm, nurturing environment at Connor. When you enter Connor, you'll notice the new blue iron benches that blank the entryway, the warm and welcoming staff. We believe that Connor, when you enter, it's like getting a nice big hug, so we're very proud of that. We're also proud of the goal-setting that we're doing this year. We are helping students to realize their potential through setting personal and academic goals. We're also committed to celebrating innovative spaces. Tonight, our teachers were honored with STEM grants, which we're excited about, to deck to create the roller coaster and science labs. Teachers are also recreating their libraries to enhance them for student use. We're also really proud of the safety patrol, which is also new at Connor this year. Our fifth grade students have developed an application process, and they spend a trimester keeping the Connor Falls safe. So we have three priorities this year for Connor. We believe that by increasing students' access to books, creating hands-on, minds-on math experiences, and fostering an environment where students feel healthy, safe, and supported, the RP Connor students can reach their learning goals and move along the learning trajectory. The impact of increasing the volume of books read will be realized by an increase in the students' reading levels. We're also going to be taking a look at the regional percentile rank for the students with individual students who took the ELA exam. The state measures proficiency at 75%. So we're looking at students in third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, and even looking at them as sixth graders, and making sure that students are moving along the trajectory. So for those students who took the exam, that's valuable data that we're using to support those students. We're also going to be looking at a new report from the NWBA, and this is a student profile report that actually gives you goals for students. We have finished this exam three times a year, and we're able to monitor through progress how students are moving towards their learning goals. So we're taking advantage of this as a measure. We have some exciting literacy actions this year at Connor. As I mentioned before, we're looking at the learning trajectory, so we're taking a close look at the learning progression. Teachers are sitting with students and looking at where students are from pre-assessment and then setting goals. We also established accountable independent reading to point airtime. We are committed to 30 minutes of independent reading daily in the classrooms and rates we can find. We've also created an English language learner toolkit, and this is to give access to students to be able to read and comprehend text. So the teachers can go on to our newly created RP Connor curriculum site, and they can access, as you can see there, many different strategies they can use to help the students to unpack complex texts. We also do something really fun called the Friday Funnies. It's a way for students to play with words and play with language. Every Friday, I announce a tongue twister or teaser of some sort, and the students have to, in their classroom, work to figure out what the answer is to the funny. And the names go in a jar, and the kids are excited. The funny thing is that when school first started, the kids had no idea what the answers are, and now all the classes are getting the right answer, so we have to amp it up. But we also are playing with words. We also just purchased Renaissance Accelerated Reader. It's a, it's a program where students can track their reading progress, and it's tied to the mark system, which is in our library, so the students look at their reading levels, a selection of books pop up, they go to the library, check out a book, and it tracks their number of minutes read, and they can take a little quiz, and it helps to accelerate their love of reading. We know through the research that students can achieve in literacy if they're not reading, so we're making a commitment at Connor to make sure that all students are reading books of choice and having the time to really enjoy a good book. Additional literacy actions this year that we believe will support our goals, we created something we're calling Emergent Engineers and Ecologists. When we looked at our data in September, we noticed that students in grades K through two, there were quite a few students who were exceeding the standards for grades K to K1, 2. So we worked together to brainstorm a way to meet the needs of these students, and we created this program where students work on their literacy skills through problem and project-based projects. We're also looking at explicit instruction and ensuring that gradually released responsibility is happening through the I do, which is the teacher, the we do is where we work together, then the you do when you're ready for independent practice. And again, we're looking at data to drive the decisions that we're making with our instruction, looking at small groupings, looking at ways to group students during the IE block, and like the emergent engineers, and ecologists, a flexible, fluid program that will change throughout the course of the school year. We've also created something new at Connor called lab sites. You'll see in the picture there, we have Sue Perio, who's our literacy coach, she's leading a model lesson, and teachers, which you can see off to the side, they're watching the lesson, they're taking notes around the instructional strategies, and they later debrief what they see. Our instructional facilitator, Dawn Bean, also hosts lab sites with the teachers, and we believe it helps to focus the work and give lifetime professional development and feedback. Priority number two is for mathematics. We believe that using constructiveness approaches will help us to realize an increase in our math scores. Uh, we are using the district common core, common, common core math assessments to measure that. We're also, as we're doing an ELA, looking at the regional percentile rank for the students who took the exam, and looking at the 75% as the art mark for, for success. And we believe that through the constructiveness math approaches, students will be able to see an increase. Just as we're doing an ELA, we're also using the NWBA math report, the student profile. Students take the test in the fall, and then we look at the goals, instructional areas, and then we monitor their progress over the course of the school year to ensure that they are moving along the learning trajectory. Some exciting mathematical actions, we are focusing this year on the mathematical practices within the Common Core standards. There are eight mathematical practices that students should be working through to be successful. For example, communicating mathematics, reasoning, constructing arguments. So our math specialist is working with the teachers to support that work. We're also doing a lot of work with data-driven practices. We have them applying rest stops. They are formative check-ins where students answer a couple of questions, and they evaluate themselves to say, am I there yet? Am I there? Am I almost there? And then they develop I can statements where they can themselves be empowered to be successful in the standard. And these rest stops also help teachers to know that they have it, or you know what, let's do some more work on this and help them to move along. So we're really proud of that work. Another thing we're doing along that is really focusing on problem solving and critical thinking. Earlier, you heard that we received a grant for, for break 10 support. We're really excited about this. Break 10 junior, featured in the picture there, he came to our school in the fall to kick off our work with a family fun night. Parents and families played math games, and we're excited that break 10 himself will be joining us next week at Connor for, back for an actual extended day with our teachers. We're going to focus on problem solving and the mathematical practices, and the next day, we're going to be meeting with our students to talk about math and the books that he's written. So in Connor, we're focusing on giving students time to practice that I do, we do, you do, and really working through how numbers work, looking at different operations of numbers, and really talking about math and engaging in real mathematical conversations. We also have lab sites, which is another new thing to Connor, and you'll see there, Ms. Brandon is leading a, a discussion there with students. They're all seated around a group of students, and they're talking about the ways in which they designed their ratings. So there's a really rich conversation, gets kids talking about math, and thinking deeply and collaborating. So our final goal, priority goal, is fostering a healthy, safe, and supportive learning environment. We believe that by having students set personal and clinicals, getting students leadership opportunities, and providing timely and consistent feedback to students, we will be able to foster a supportive learning environment. We have some actions that we put into place this year. Ownership of learning. The students, as I mentioned earlier, are setting goals for themselves. Teachers are showing students where they are. You'll see in the image there, where Mrs. Corbett is meeting with a student. There is a learning progressions chart in front of the student, they're talking about how she's doing as a writer, and she's identifying for herself a learning goal, and she will support the student in meeting that goal. Also this year, Ms. Bean, our instructional facilitator, has empowered the fourth and fifth grade of student members of our tech team. They go into the kindergarten, first grade classes, and they help the students work on the computer. We've also, student-driven, fifth graders came to me and said, send a little letter there, Ms. Dowd, we need a newspaper. She called it the Connor Chronicles, so we renamed it Who Chronicles? So we're going to have an online newspaper with the help of my two fifth grade friends. We created an application, and they're currently being submitted. They're really interesting to read. So we'll select 20 students to be leaders of our online newspapers. So that's been really, really exciting for Connor. We also have this year, as I mentioned before, brought in the safety patrol. What's it hold is that the students came together, same thing, application process, but we met for the first time. They themselves nominated the captain, lieutenant, and sergeant. And then we talked about where in the school should we have a post? And the students that have developed the list there, all the different places in the school where they can stand, who would stand there, and where they would go in the afternoon. We meet once a month, we talk about how it's going, have a captain's report, lieutenant's report, sergeant's report. And John Keer, our security guard, said this is the best roll call that he's ever attended. So we recently invited J. Smith to come over to the school. Students during the early morning drop-off, we changed the drop-off circle, and one of the patrolmen said, you know, Ms. Dowd, it would be so much safer if we extended the yellow line and the curb all the way to the drop-off circle. So of course, I emailed J. Smith, and he came right over, and in the rain, went outside with, with my team there, and we're happy to say that we're going to have a nice yellow curb as soon as it's above 40 degrees. Another exciting new thing at Connor, the drop-off circle. If you've ever been to Connor in the morning, my first day, I couldn't breathe when I saw the congestion in the parking lot, so we rerouted the cars starting at 9:00 AM. And we have staff members opening car doors, unbuckling students, and bringing them onto the curb safely. And the parents are very happy, they shake their Starbucks cup, and they keep driving. So it's smooth, and all students are in the building by 8:14, safely in their rooms. So we're really proud of that. First day, it was like 8:40? 9:40, sorry. Another exciting thing we did at Connor this year, which is new, we established a wellness committee, and this is teacher, teacher committee. And we were working with the Alliance for Healthy Schools. We filled out the survey online, and we're looking for a bronze medal, hopefully this year, and then we'll make it a silver. But one of the things in our action plan, we realized is that we need opportunities for our kids to move more during indoor recess. So as a committee, we are designing structured recess, physical activity, each thing for the kids to do. So one of those things we're doing, I reached out to the Rockland County Health Department, and we're partnering with them to get into the local impact grant. So part of that is just simply creating a wellness worksite. So we agree to eat healthy snacks, and we agree to be healthy at Connor. So part of that, we get an option to have a walking path. So we're going to be installed on the walking path, so students have a walking club, we have pedometers for them, and we're hoping for fit bits for our teachers so that we can be fit as well. We also have a Colgate dental van come this year, very exciting, over 150 students receive free dental screenings, and we'll be working with them in the coming year. So that's another really exciting thing at Connor. So I think Connor is awesome. Every single day, when I finish the announcements, I say, we say the kids be awesome today. And so we took some time, Ms. Brandon was my in-house videographer, videographer, and we created a video of some of the students sharing what makes Connor awesome.
We created, they could show you how awesome Connor School is. We hope you enjoy it.
School is awesome because teachers help you with the facts that you don't know or things that you really need.
Our school is awesome because we have safety patrol, and that helps us in the hallways and keeps us safe.
And we get to be in vehicles that we never got before.
Cause we get to read in vehicles that we never did before.
What makes Connor's school so awesome is that we're getting our own library in our classroom.
Cause we get to read and we get to read the books that we like a lot with our families.
All the fiction stories that we're doing on computers.
What makes Connor's school so awesome is that every Friday, over the loudspeaker, Ms. Dowd says a Friday buddy, which is a joke, and each class gets to submit their answer. And if you, and if you get it right, then at the end of the month, you can have a chance to win recess.
Cool. Did you win recess yet?
No. We do tutorials like science, math, social studies, and we're always on the computers.
So you hear music in the library. And I want to play the violin in practice in fourth grade.
Connor's school is amazing here.
We have tech cafe. If you get the opperly correct, you get to go to tech cafe with the speed. It's so cool.
And school is awesome because the teachers are awesome.
Connor's school is awesome because I like to play on my Excel in Core 5.
What makes Connor's school so awesome is that every year for a month, we get to do the breakback challenge and win cool prizes.
Starting in Sweden, help to help leadership work.
Connor's school is amazing because we get to perform in this called child music teacher. We perform all the different things.
I like putting it to reach out to like, yeah, I want to like your song.
Cause I like painting.
Love having the safety patrol around so they can keep the hall safe.
Can I play with my friend?
Connor's school is awesome because it has everything you need to learn.
Thank you for sitting.
Our be kind of school.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I just have a comment. I want to tell you, I'm pretty fortunate. I get to go far in your building more than any other one in the district because of the fact they're working soft. But all of you here have worked with every teacher we hear and yourself, you're doing a great job. And it's nice because I was joking about the security department. This retired police officer is one of my part-time officers. So having Connor is great, but honestly, all of you do an awesome job. And I tell you, excellent job. That was a great presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Welcome to the first presentation. We're very happy to have you. And with the work on the wellness area, I hope that you plan to present at the Rockland County Department of Health March 12th to share your experiences.
I definitely will.
We'll be talking about.
All right, excellent. Great job. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to have the principal of Solpsburg, Joe Lloyd, and I believe it's Dr. Jonah, right? Let's try to stop it. I received a stop. Thank you, sir.
I'd also like to share that Solpsburgs participate in two of those funnies thus far.
You have.
I think we're one for two.
Yeah, you can follow us on Twitter. We put the joke up on early in the morning on Friday. She said, you can weigh in on it. It's a big answer. Joe, Ms. Dr. Lloyd tries every time. I think I had two weeks ago.
Who's the snowman with the?
Snowman with the vampire. You got that one. You did. It's a walkie-talkie.
Is that the P D F?
Yeah.
It's in your email.
It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. It's always enjoyable to share the season. At Solpsburg Elementary School, we're very much, we take great pride in the community that we have in Solpsburg and hope to rally around our students. And this year, we really want to make sure that we share our mission, our vision at Solpsburg. We want to inspire students to believe in themselves while reaching their highest potential. And we believe that we can reach that mission. We're building student belonging, engagement, and achievement. When our students leave us and they head off to Southern Middle School, we want them to be developed as literate, critical thinkers who possess creativity, character, and practice healthy living. And as we've considered the last three years, our first year at Solpsburg Elementary School is very much about initiating relationships, getting to know one another, and building a culture very much oriented towards our students. In year two, we looked at it. So we integrated academic staples such as learning targets, Solpsburg snapshots, and we developed a new physical education unit called Farmville with Coach Wojciechowski. When we think about the learning targets, what we look to do is we try to repackage the Common Core learning standards into student-friendly objectives. And we will share those objectives with them at the beginning of every lesson and at the beginning of every unit. And that gives them an idea, gives us an idea, and the students an idea of where they're headed during a particular lesson or a particular unit. Our snapshots are very much an opportunity for us to take a look at the upcoming units and identify key standards that we want to measure in our building. They're teacher-developed, they're given throughout each unit in literacy and mathematics. And it also provides our teachers with an idea of what we're doing well, what we need to work on. There's teacher conversation and we work to bring our students into conversation as well. Coach Wojciechowski actually right now is running Gym City, which is exciting. When he developed Farmville last year, what he looked to do was to develop cooperation amongst students while also developing the physical, also developing their physical fitness. And he also drew attention to agriculture and economy. So he'll be running that program again this spring. We'll be running our farmers outfits and we're very excited to have that in the building now as another physical education program. So this year, we're really committed to collaboration and we want to harness the staples that we wrinkled in during year number two, including the targets and the snapshots. And we believe that Solpsburg Elementary School, the most valuable resource that we have is each other. Without collaboration, our growth is limited to our own perspectives. This was quoted by a teacher, public school teacher named Robert John Meehan. So when we think about developing literate critical thinkers at Solpsburg Elementary School, our first priority is developing these literate students. And we want to make sure that we're achieving benchmark goals on what's called a developmental reading assessment. It's commonly called a D R A too. I think sometimes we talk in acronyms as educators, but I'll do my very best to make sure I explain what those acronyms are this evening. And the developmental reading assessment is administered in the fall, the spring, and the winter time. And it's a nice benchmark for us to make sure our students are moving forward. And we're looking based on last year's results from last year to move grade level cohort proficiency levels with an increase of 15%, an average of 15%. We also like to use another assessment, which Ms. Dowd spoke about a little earlier. It's based upon Northwest Evaluation Association's Measurements of Academic Progresses. It's called the MAPS. And we actually administer this assessment again in the fall, the winter, and the spring. And it actually helps us to identify grade level priorities. It's not administered to grades 10 and 1, but it is administered to grades 2 through 5. So priorities such as foundational skills in grade 2, vocabulary in grade 3, and informational text in 4th and 5th grade areas that we'll be working on based on our full administration from this year. Over the summertime, we also took a look at some of the data from last year's 2016 E L A assessments. While participation has gone down the last couple of years because of the opt-out movement, we still believe we can call some important data from those reports and we've developed some grade level priorities based on that information. I have a little picture there. It's a difference between the Department of Pure Speculation and Department of Data Analysis. We're very much looking to draw, bring in different scorecards to our work at Solpsburg Elementary School. Our last goal for developing literate students is to increase the number of students meeting proficiency on the New York State E L A exam. So again, based on last year's results in 4th and 5th grade, we're very much working to have a 15% increase in the number of 4th graders achieving the 75th percentile and a 16% increase in the number of 5th graders achieving the 75th percentile. As Ms. Dowd shared earlier in her presentation, the 75th percentile represents level 3. So if we can get our students to a level 3, that is proficient according to New York State. We like level 4s as well. When we talk about developing critical thinkers, we're talking mostly about memoracy. And our first goal within this range is to achieve benchmark goals on what Ms. Dowd explained was the Ramco Common Assessments. And again, this is given each year and we have an idea of where our grade level cohorts are coming in at. And based on last year's results, sometimes they're given, several grade levels are given in February, most grade levels are given in June. And based on information from last year, we want to be able to have cohort proficiency levels increased by an average of 11%. Very much like literacy, we also draw upon the MAPS or the N W A MAPS for mathematics and state assessments, looking this year back at our full administration of the MAPS. We identified numbers and operations in 2nd grade as priorities, operations and algebraic thinking, having students look for patterns and relationships with numbers, and geometry for 4th and 5th grade. Again, in the summertime, we also identify some key priorities in mathematics that we have shared with our teachers. Lastly, when we talk about developing critical thinkers, our third goal is to increase the number of students meeting proficiency on the New York State math exams. And again, we're hoping to have a 13% increase in the number of 4th graders achieving the 75th percentile and a 19% increase in the number of 5th graders achieving the 75th percentile. And one thing you might be asking yourself, well gee, was how did this guy pull out 13% and 19%? And what I would like to share is, we would say we have about four to five students in each grade level that are on the cusp of reaching proficiency. And when you address those kids out, that's kind of where we're getting those numbers from based on our cohorts. In order to enhance literacy and memoracy at Solpsburg Elementary School, we're working to leverage a number of resources. This year, we're committed to collaboration. So we want to make sure we draw attention to the different levels of support we're receiving from the district level. We have our new literacy coach, Sue Perio, who visited us in the fall. And during that visit, she started, I don't want to say in October, she worked with our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade teachers emphasizing writing. She pushed into the classrooms. She also helped us with conferencing with students. That was very helpful. She's done a really great job. She did a lot of studying over the summertime that showed. We've also developed flexible classroom settings. And I wanted to take a moment to thank the Board of Education and the Central Office Administration in particular, because we wouldn't have the flexible classrooms that we developed in Solpsburg without your contributions and support. We appreciate that. And we will show a video in a few moments just to highlight what those classrooms look like. Also, we've had a lot of support from Central Office with our observations to teachers. Mr. Walker in particular in his office has reviewed a number of principals' observational reports and he reached out to one of us in the fall to give us feedback, I thought the feedback we're providing to our teachers. So he studied all the observations we've written up and he's given us our own priorities as principals and what we can share with teachers. And that's certainly been a big help for us and we appreciate that support. At the school level, the more things change, the more they stay the same. And what I mean by that is we're continuing to rest on our staples of learning targets and snapshots. That'll be a continuing staple of our building for, we hope, a long time. At the lower level though, we added a new program in this school called the Sunrise Scholars Literacy Program. And Ms. Spencer is the second picture up on this slide. She's actually supporting our 1st and 2nd graders. I want to say on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, she's supporting our 1st graders. And on Tuesdays and Thursdays, she's working with our 2nd graders in the morning. That runs from about 8:00 to 8:40 on those days. And lastly, at the classroom level, we are working to push collaborative planning and instruction based on our snapshots and professional development time. We've drawn upon Maryland Friends co-teaching strategies and we utilize targeted support during our core blocks and during our intervention and enrichment block. So a moment ago, we talked about the flexible setting. I'm going to ask Ms. Rizzo, I know we can't open it in the PDF, but we do have a video that we prepared for you. Our public information specialist, Jenny Mermelstein, and her team visited us about a month ago. She actually visited all the Ramco schools to highlight innovations going on. And this is our little snippet of Solpsburg Elementary School in the 5th grade house. My name is Joe Boyd, the principal of Solpsburg Elementary. This year, we have what we call the 5th grade house and we're very much striving to be a professional learning community. You know, when you think of a house, it signifies family and community. So calling it the 5th grade house emphasizes this team's approach to instructional learning. I think the kids are excited. I think they feel special and they reward us by being very responsible with this new approach.
It's definitely different because it's more comfortable and you have more options of what type you want to sit in.
I like to stand up while I work sometimes and I can stand up now because we have the high tech.
What can we do differently that will make learning exciting? So we decided, let's not just do standing, let's do different types of settings so that students have the option of what works best for them.
It's certainly open where kids can move to different places easily. The furniture being on wheels allows kids to kind of come together in different groups more easily, allows them to collaborate.
It's fun to sit. I like it, especially at the seating and it's like a warm welcome. It makes you want to come to school. It makes you want to learn.
So I'll just speak about the video review while we reopen the Solpsburg Elementary School C S C plan. But one of the things that you might not get to see in the video, and again, we want to thank Jenny and her team for visiting our school and the board again for the enablement us to have the flexible settings. But one of the things you might not have seen in that video is that the 5th grade house is not only about flexible setting, it's about living collaboration in the building. During our literacy and memoracy blocks, we'll actually have our literacy specialist, our math specialist, our instructional facilitator, our E N L teacher push into those blocks. So we have a number of adults in the class and what we're trying to do is leverage the personal resources that we already have in the building. And we're actually reducing the class sizes at the same time. So it's a really exciting process and we're very much hoping that the 5th grade house is a beacon that we can build across the building. We thank our teachers for working on that for us and opening the doors. When we talk about collaboration, another area we focused on is Jerome from Maryland Friends work, who's very much at the forefront of co-teaching. So if we're going to talk about collaboration, we recognize as a faculty and staff that we have to talk about what co-teaching can look like. And again, that's leveraging the teacher resources that we have in our building. So I happened to be in a kindergarten observation a few days ago and this is being taught by Mrs. Rodriguez, who's at the forefront of this picture here. And Mrs. Rodriguez has been working in Mrs. Jefferson's kindergarten classroom for a few days. And what we noticed is that Melissa Jefferson enabled Seraphina, our E N L teacher, to run those lessons during that literacy block. And Seraphina was teaching instruction and making predictions, which was kind of neat. Here, we have a very clear model of station teaching. So what's happened is Seraphina has taught the lesson on predictions. She had a 20-minute whole group lesson. And then students broke up into small groups and they got support from my Mrs. Jefferson, our kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Heimer, our literacy aide, or Mrs. Rodriguez, our E N L teacher. So it was a nice moment for us, wanted to make sure we got that. And we're seeing collaboration like this across the building. The bottom of the slide, it has an idea of where our E L L students are actually currently at Solpsburg Elementary School. There's pretty much five targets. There's students who are entering, emerging, transitioning, expanding, and commanding. And if you look at our school, we have about 17 to 18 students at Solpsburg Elementary School, believe it or not. That's jumped in the last two years. But most of our students fall within the expanding range. But over the summertime, Mrs. Rivera from K P S and Ms. Dowd from RP Connor offered the administrative team a really fantastic presentation on how we can support our students. So they helped us those two days, helped us to dig back into the nicest of our scores and identified focus areas for our E L L students. So what you might not be able to see in the chart is we have speaking, writing, reading, listening, signified by letters S, W, R, L. We went back into our students' nicest of our reports and we identified focus areas. So when they're being pulled for small construction, we have areas that our teachers can work on for those particular students. Our last priority at Solpsburg Elementary Schools really focuses on the social, emotional wellbeing of our students. wellbeing of our students. We want to promote their wellbeing, we'll also explore new community partnerships. And this colorful chart that you see in front of you is something that we've been integrating to our building through the last three years. This is drawn from the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, commonly known as ACSB. They offered school principals a tool called the CIT tool. CIT stands for School Improvement Tool. And it's a perceptual survey that we can gather information from our instructors and they give us an idea of how we're doing this building. So we took a look at, we've been doing this survey now for about three years. When we looked at the results from 2014, 2015 to the end of last year, 2015, 2016, we saw positive growth in a number of areas. When you hit the 4.0 mark or higher, that's a fairly good range. So the more green this chart looks, the better we're doing. It's on a 0 to 5 scale. We still noticed though that health was an issue that represented, that featured in our study. So what we wanted to do was, we wanted to take a look at that a little bit deeper. And we started taking a look at our attendance data and we noticed how the school overall attendance dropped from 95.7 to 95.3. And overall, that doesn't sound like a big drop, but we looked at our chronic absenteeism, that rose. Our chronic absenteeism rose a lot. So what we wanted to do is, we want to be more purposeful in how we're monitoring that situation. We made a lot of phone calls last summer. We made a lot of phone calls to families of students who were absent 10 plus days or more. We had positive conversations with those families. What we're doing this year is, we're tracking attendance. Once we hit three days or more, three times or more, we're reaching out to families offered by phone calls, through letters, and in some cases, we might make home visits. But we want to make sure that we're stressing the importance of student health and attendance at Salisbury Elementary School. Another goal that we have at Salisbury is to enhance school-wide environmental consciousness while working to reduce garbage by 14%. So another part of the survey signified to us from years 2014, 2015 till last year, 2015, 2016, that we're doing fairly well in a number of areas, but we still need to improve in our family and community engagement. So last spring, we applied to be one of three Rockland County Green Schools and we were happy to receive information that we are participating in that. And we've been working very closely with the Rockland County Waste Authority and Hospitality Green. And what we're looking to do is to develop a green team at Salisbury Elementary School that could help us to reduce the garbage and waste, particularly in the cafe and the classrooms. So we've been meeting with both Kerry Scales and the Bodine G&amp;E, who represent both organizations. And we're basically scheming a plan right now to have our 1st and 2nd graders to start a green team at Salisbury. We actually also had an opportunity to visit the middle school last Friday. We had a fire drill, so we had a little fun with that. We walked around the building, we got to see the composting area, a lot of neat things that Mr. Vicarrela and Ms. Mann have been running at that school. And we're going to meet with them a couple of times as well. So again, this theme of commitment to collaboration, looking outside to different partnerships and resources to bring those ideas back to our school. And lastly, when we talk about promoting students' wellbeing, we want to increase opportunities for students to discuss self-awareness and concern for others. You might remember a few years ago when I initially came to Salisbury Elementary School, we developed a program called Character Rallies. And this pretty much enables me to have face time with the students in Salisbury in grades K to 5. We'll talk about concepts such as parent consistency, fairness, respect, responsibility, and trustworthiness throughout the year. And those are really great conversations. We can talk about them for a good 30 minutes. But we also want to have more intimate conversations at the classroom level. So we're actually pushing our social worker into our K-2 classrooms and our psychologists here into our 3 to 5 classrooms using the Second Step Program. And this provides us the opportunity to have intimate conversations emphasizing students' self-awareness and concern for others. So when we talk about our social, emotional goals, some of our leverage points include student attendance, tracking attendance, targeted communications, in some cases, home visits. When we talk about waste production, we're looking to partner with the Rockland County Waste Authority. We're going to continue our relationship with the Southern Middle School Green Team. And we're going to collect data and enact a plan that we believe is going to begin in January. When we talk about promoting students' character, we're going to continue to hold our Character Rallies. We're going to add and implement the Second Step Program at a more intimate level. And we're going to continue to recognize character at Salisbury because we believe that together, we are better. Thank you very much and we'll answer any questions that anyone has.
Very nice presentation. So I apologize, I didn't pull the C-SIP from last year. But the goals that you had set for yourself last year, did you meet them? And if you didn't, do you have any ideas why that was?
Well, in the C-SIP, Dr. Howard, what's interesting is we've noticed that the participation rates have dropped over the last two. We've noticed that the participation rate has dropped the last two years with the opt-out movement. Looking back on the C-SIP, I believe we met two of the four goals.
Which ones?
I do. I want to say 4th grade, our 4th grade goals in ELA mathematics, we made those two. We did not make those two in 5th grade. One of the things we noticed is that we had a 16% to 65% participation rate in grade 5. So 35% of our kids did not take the test in 4th grade. We had about 80% participation. So we think that was something that, there was something there with the participation. I also showed in one of the slides, a number of priorities that we drew out over the summertime and we believe those are areas that we can improve upon based on those ELA mathematical areas.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you were using the state tests to monitor your goals last year, but this year you're going to be using other measures? Or are you still using the state test system measures?
We're going to use the state test measures as one of our three goals. Yes, because one of the concerns we have is with opt-out movements, you basically want to make sure you have other measures to draw upon. So I think I referenced the developmental reading assessment that we'll use K-5, the NWA MAPS that we'll use 2 or 5, and then when we have the participation rates, we'll certainly draw upon the state assessments as well.
So you can use multiple measures for your goals this year? And so last year, you said it was those two, the 4th and the 5th grade in ELA math that you didn't meet, but who met, who got it once?
I'm pretty certain that we met our 4th grade goals in ELA mathematics and that we were a little short on our 5th grade goals for ELA mathematics.
Okay.
But that information, again, was brought back from our teachers in the summertime and we're, we have a pretty good idea of what else we need to focus on this year.
And then my second question was, when you made the phone calls for the chronic absenteeism, was there one particular theme that kind of came to light that was something that you could easily modify or rectify or a misperception that you could correct that would help with that? Was there one particular theme or was it just a whole bunch of various different reasons?
You know, I think it was probably a number of different themes, but if I could, you know, share them with you. In some cases, it was health, students who were sick a lot. In other cases, it was children making trips with families, number of different occasions. And then in a third case, what we noticed is, the chronic absenteeism didn't build up till the end of the year, so it kind of snuck by. So they were 3, maybe even the fall, and then they crept up to 5 or 6. In the winter time, by the springtime, it crept up even more. So those are the situations that we weren't as concerned about because it built up on the year. I would say the absences that we're most concerned about are the sicknesses.
Thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Congratulations first to the law, we're very proud. I'm sure that was a lot of work. And very excited about the Green Team initiative and that would be amazing continually with the middle school green team. So thanks for that and whatever support you need.
Thank you so much, appreciate, appreciate the sentiments.
Oh, you both did a great job. Thank you, Bradley C-SIPS. Very informative, a lot of point, thank you very much. Keep up the good work and always hear us good things in our chat.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again, both of you, the next, all of the teachers, everybody. Okay, information items, we have the advocacy committee and I'll turn it over to Amadi, who's the committee chair.
Marissa Network. Okay. So first I have a question regarding hosting the committee meetings. Just want to make sure that some committee members were not aware there was a meeting and a question came up. So how are we posting committee meetings? On board docs?
Yes.
Okay. And how about in the past, we've seen them posted to the district calendar, are we still doing that?
I never, I posted board, our regular board meetings in the district calendar, but I never posted any committee meetings to the district. But if you wanted to start then.
Just because students need to attend these meetings for credits and most people don't look on board docs, so the calendar is really what they go to. And I believe in the past, that was the custom, so that would be amazing. Thank you. Okay, so the advocacy committee met last night, there were six members in attendance. The primary focus was obviously regarding the school tax collection bill, which was recently all over the media as being voted vetoed by the governor. So the committee is working with the bill writer, Assemblywoman Ellen Jaffe, on the best ways to continue to advocate for this important bill and especially being informed that she will be resubmitting the bill with new edits to it. So stay tuned for that. Concerns were raised in relation to the school tax collection bill as to what's been on the media regarding the town of Ralaco increasing the taxes in anticipation that the bill would have been passed. But since the bill didn't pass, and if in fact the school taxes were, I'm sorry, the town taxes were increased in that perspective, we need to make sure that we're not charged twice a percentage on collecting school taxes by the town of Ralaco. So for community members to be aware of that, eyes open, there's a town board meeting on 14th where members of the community can raise that issue. The second item that was on our table was the committee considering advocacy efforts in relation to two public education funding issues that are recurring this year. One of them is the tax cap and the second would be the tax credits for private schools. So we're continuing to work to advocate against those, obviously. Thirdly, at a re-support meeting, we were informed that part of this strategic plan will be looking at a new district website, which is exciting news. And the advocacy committee discussed, you know, some recommendations regarding our website and came up with a few items. First would be trying to obtain feedback from teachers, parents, community, you know, school community members, as has been done in the past regarding the site before goes live. So I think there's a way to obtain that feedback while it's still, you know, behind the scenes, as they'd say, in order to make sure that it serves the purposes that we hope it serves. The second item was making sure that the website is mobile-friendly, so that we can all use it using our tablets, our cell phones. I'm sure you're looking at that already. Recommending that the website has some push notifications so that we receive alerts when new information is posted, those people don't routinely go and check and would like to get some sort of notification process. And revisiting the app, considering the app possibility is requested. And finally, a selfish request, more visibility for the advocacy page so that members of our community are able to see what we here in Ralaco are advocating for. We feel that's very important. In regards to the district name change, the advocacy committee is suggesting to the Board of Act, a strong PR campaign, publicizing the benefits of the name change and branding the district. And looking into or considering whether it's feasible to place a name change as a referendum on a future ballot in the spring with the purpose to strengthen the application to the Department of Education. And finally, I have a question to the men from the advocacy committee. When can we expect to see our board meetings that we've been videotaping for quite some time posted to the website? Thank you.
Thank you, Amadi. You need to answer that or can I look it up and just check it out? If you need to check it out.
I think we discussed it before, so if you want to answer. If you're not, it's your turn.
We'll have an answer for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Amadi.
Thank you.
All right, the next item would be public participation. This is going to be public participation for any district business. As a reminder, again, public participation will be open for 30 minutes. And each member of the public who wishes to address the board, left 3 minutes to do so, please approach the podium, state your name, school affiliation, or village residence. If you could also leave some contact info, an email or home address to report your follow-up if necessary. What we ask is your address and comment towards us, but although once again, we cannot engage in back and forth conversation, we're listening to what you have to say and appreciate your comments. Lastly, as a reminder, per sort of policy, 12:30, 14:30, 30 to 40. Please allow discuss concerns regarding individual, district, personnel, or students. And if anybody would like to come up to the podium, please feel free.
My name is John Fennell. I'm a concerned parent of a Southern High School freshman and I came here to hopefully have the, get the board support. We've encountered a situation and in the last 36 hours, both myself and my wife reached out to several members of the school administration as well as central reservations with no response. And as a concerned parent, I think 36 hours is more than enough time to have someone get back to us. So I'm hoping you as the board can help us and help to set something up for tomorrow. I think that's more than enough time. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else that can get up and speak on anything? Okay, if no one else would like to speak, we will close up participation. And I would ask for any superintendent comments if you start.
No comments.
In her comments, as prior to adjournment, I just want to wish, we're not going to see any of you, I should say here at the meeting, obviously before then, in regards to prior to the holidays, want to wish you a great holiday season, to the teachers, administration, and all our staff here in Ralaco Central, I think I'm after all of us. We thank you for your continued efforts to our students, our community. Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you.